The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
So we'll call our meeting to order. Praise for the Pledge of Allegiance at 7:00. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic which stands on my nation, America, in the visible and legitimate interest of all. Call, call.
Councilor Angela Kristensen.
Here.
Councilor, oh, Councilor Giannone.
Here.
Mayor Krasinski.
Here.
Councilor Lani.
Here.
Councilor Ted Nairle.
Here.
Councilor Russell.
Here.
There, you have four.
Thank you. So now we come to our audience of citizens. If anyone wishes to address us and speak to the council about anything, tell us your opinions, now would be the time. Do we have anybody that wishes to speak? Seeing none, I will close that portion of the meeting and we'll move on to our meeting agenda, which starts with our consent agenda.
A couple of motions tonight.
Yes.
I will make a motion to remove Consent Agenda Number Three and make it the first thing under New Business.
Second.
Thank you.
And also.
Close in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have an add to our agenda. I want to make that 9A so that we keep Ray, Dream, and some topics all together.
Okay, so we're adding, so, motion. Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Close in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close or move? Okay, so now we'll, our consent agenda, there's two items there. Donations to the Berlin Animal Control and two picnic benches and plot markers for the Hatchery Brook Community Gardens. And that was for a Eagle Scout project. So those are our consent agenda items. Do we have any motion?
Sure. Motion to accept the remaining two consent agenda items tonight.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close or move? Okay, so now we have our, the, I guess, 3A or?
1A.
1, 1, 1A. 1A. So our Eagle Scout project, since we have our Eagle Scout here, go ahead.
I'll just call it as I say, introduce it. Adam, Aiden Rich is here to describe an Eagle Scout project that he has proposed to do at Pistol Creek. He's going to help us. Pistol Creek, the basement is an open space and people use it for different departments. As with any open space, we have Space Creek. And so Aiden has proposed putting up some fencing and helping us keep that. So it's certainly set aside for certain departments. So if you both go ahead and describe your project.
On up. Yeah, yeah, you could. Thank you.
So, pretty much my project would be going to the basement of Pistol Creek, like you said. And just down there right now, it's a little disorganized, if anyone here has seen it recently. So pretty much what I would be doing is going in, building some fencing around a certain area, like, from one column to another, to another. And specifically, that would be benefiting social services and food pantry in town, just so it would be a locking system, so nobody could move their stuff. So Doug Truitt in town, who has been who I've been communicating with, and that way all this stuff for food pantry and for evictions later on could not be moved and they could be found very easily and be nice and organized.
Great. Thank you. That's excellent. We all, we look forward to your project, as we do all the Eagle Scout projects. They have all, the ones I've seen done phenomenal, help the town quite a bit, so. So, with that in mind, we'll take a motion to approve.
Okay, I move to approve Aiden Rich's Eagle Scout project at Pistol Creek Clubhouse.
Second. Thank you very much. Any further questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Close or move? So, good luck on the project, yes. Thank you very much. Thanks. Thanks, Sid. Okay, so now we are on to our new business. First topic is our discussion, possible action concerning the replacement of Councilor Danielli. That's pretty much it?
You stated it.
Yeah, so, and as you all know, she, fortunately, Councilor Danielli resigned. It was, you know, no one wanted to see her go. She did a great job, and we'll probably recognize her at a future meeting, but she had some good things going on with her daughter and soccer and, you know, a lot of family commitments, so it was understandable that, as we all know, family comes first, and that was the issue, it was really just a time issue, and she was gonna, she was gonna try and get through it this year, but she just didn't want to short the town or the council on her being able to make it to meetings. So hence, that's really, that's the reason for her resignation. So that obviously leaves us one short. So, we can discuss, we have a nomination, if you want to, go ahead and nominate, and then we can discuss.
I could do that. I make a motion to nominate Charlie Pianessa to replace Amy Danielli.
Second. Thank you. So discussion now, Charlie, many of you know Charlie. Obviously, he's been on the council, I think, he's been on the council for four years, two terms, and he ran for office last time, did well in the election as well. So I think we, the feeling amongst the majority was that he has the experience, he's been here, and obviously we're, he would just, he would fill the, you know, the term until the next election. So that's why we thought he would be a good choice for the appointment. Yes.
I, you know, in these days of political discord, I'm sure there was some conjecture that those of us on the other side would just like to create havoc and vote no on everyone, but that's not the case. There's a longstanding tradition or precedent to replace the person from the party from which they came by that party. Sometime you pushed the envelope, like when I was replaced on April 1st, 2014, but it was unanimous. And now I'm not saying we have to be unanimous tonight, but it just, I think we have to keep some civility in politics, and I think this is its basis form. We all agree, I mean, Charlie certainly has served on the council, he knows what he's doing. But, and I'd like everyone to remember, in case there's a vacancy in the future, you know, that we worked it out and we're doing it the right way. Thank you.
Appreciate that, Peter.
Just want to say, you know, last time this happened, my first year in the council, we had, you know, Democrats had Mr. Murphy, who was a pretty decent guy, and that brought us Mr. Russell, and there was no pushback on that, so we were welcome. Peter is another good guy, so I hope the minority party would accept Charlie to finish out the remainder of the term.
Okay. Any other comments? Questions?
No, the only comment I have is, you know, I tend to support Charlie, but it's so blatant the gender inequity.
Oh.
So we've been looking down this audience here this evening, so I thought I would just kind of.
Appreciate those comments. How can I answer that? We tried to replace kind of one for one, but, you know, it doesn't always work out that way, so. Any other comments? Hearing none. No further discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close or move? So moved. Congratulations, Charlie.
Congratulations, Charlie.
Would you like to say a prayer now?
If we can do that, I'm sure.
I'm prepared.
You're prepared, all right, well, Charlie's here, so I guess we're prepared.
Charlie, long time no see. Hi back.
Long time back.
What are you doing here? Do you sign this for a firm as a case may be that you have faked and discharged upon the wall your duties as a member of the Berlin Town Council for the Town of Berlin to best your ability, so help you God. I'll have all the paperwork for you. And I have a call for you.
I still got my name tag. I can bring it back. Charlie, you sure you want to do this? I should have answered that before, but.
I should have asked.
Yeah, I don't see if I did. Well, welcome back, Charlie.
May it out loud.
Okay, great. So we will move on to item number two, our review of the debt level and the recent Moody's report. And I appreciate the Board of Finance here. I know you guys have a meeting tonight, and it's great that we can have Mr. Delaney do the reports to both of us, so he doesn't have to go down and repeat it again. I know he likes to just keep repeating things, but that's okay. It's good he can get it done tonight at one time. So, we are.
You already introduced.
Okay, so, you've got the floor, Mr. Delaney.
So I will be, I'll try to be brief. I'll just point out in the back of the packet, there's a couple pages, some things that we just wanted to cover, and in the back is the actual Moody's report as well. We're interested in reading the details of it. Before I jump into the report, I just want to point out that the town has two credit bureaus that actually will rate the community. They take very different approaches. Every time that the town issues a long-term bond, they have to, we have to issue an official statement, which is a very long financial document. And with that, we hire a or potentially more than one credit bureau to review the town, and the town has opted to use Standard and Coors. With that comes not only a review of all the financials, but also a call. So we actually have a call, which typically includes the town manager, the economic development director, the finance director, and then if there's any others to participate. And we review the town, we answer the questions and give a lot more insights than you might glean just from looking at a set of numbers. Our rating from S&amp;P has consistently been double A plus. The top rating would be triple A, and then double A plus is right below that, so it's a very strong rating for the town. Moody's, the town opted about three years ago to no longer hire Moody's in an effort to cut back on spending. Moody's about three years ago took in, took on the process of evaluating all communities, and they do it in a very analytical way. So what they do is they have a firm that takes everybody's comprehensive annual financial report, a very thick financial document, puts all the numbers into a database, and it kicks out a report, and we validate that is in fact accurate. And from that, you get the report presented. So it is a very analytical view of the town. So I just want to clarify that what you're looking at and what the Moody's report came out with really has no, there's no deep analysis, discussion, or call that goes with it, it's an analytical process. With that said, the rating was an AA2, so from a ranking standpoint, again, double A is a strong rating. It would be double A plus for S&amp;P, double A2 is kind of the middle of the road, it's 1, 2, 3. So ratings are very similar, again, a strong, healthy rating for the community. They did point out some strong positives about the community, specifically wealth and income factors, and a very healthy tax base, so very complementary of the conditions in the community. But they did also point out two challenges, and that led to a negative outlook, and that's sort of their perception of looking forward from the financial state of the economy. The two points that they emphasized there was the state's financial condition, it's leading to a great degree of uncertainty amongst virtually every community. One thing that I will say, and I said it back when this rating first came out, is because there's no analysis involved, it doesn't take into account the town's response. I think we had an opportunity to sit and talk with them and explain that with a $600,000 cut from the state in the end of, at the end of November, the town's response was to find savings, and ultimately, our year finished with accomplishing the goal set forth that the council asked, well, the town and the Board of Ed will accomplish. And so I think while the state does have its challenges, the town responded in a way that I don't think is necessarily reflected in that negative outlook. The second piece that they challenged on is our debt level, and we've talked about that quite a bit. And specifically, I'll just draw one line that they used, which is the debt burden of Berlin is sizable and is a weakness in relation to the town's double A2 rating. So it is a driver of the negative outlook, it is something that they're aware of, and we've talked about it before. Just to kind of level set of where we stand, the debt level at the beginning of this fiscal year was $96.9 million, so over 100% of our budget. To give you some perspective, we talk about how best practice would say that we should have about 3% of our operating budget going to debt service payments. High end would be 6%. 6% for our budget would say that our ceiling and what we should really be aiming towards is no more than $40 million of debt. $40 million of debt borrowed for an average of 10 years would be $4 million, plus interest payments would get you at over $5 million a year. That would be 6% of that $88 million budget. So we're considerably higher than that level. There are some things we can do about that, and there are some things we can't. The way tax exempt bonds work is there's a window late in the process. If you borrow a bond for 20 years, it's very late in that process when you're able to refinance the bonds, and refinancing options were reduced with the Tax Reform Act that was passed last year. So being able to do something with our long-term bonds is a challenge at this point. We certainly could refinance them with taxable bonds if we chose to do that, but I'm not sure that would accomplish the goal of saving the town any money. There are, however, some elements of our debt that we can address, and that specifically is our short-term notes. We borrow for short-term notes for two reasons. One is short-term financing. For example, we have some roads that are being redone, costs on a couple of projects came a little bit higher due to unexpected issues that arose, and so with the last note issuance, which we had the sale last week, we borrowed $800,000 to close that shortfall in short-term borrowing with the intent next June when we issue a bond to roll it into the bond. The other reason that we've used the money is over a short-term strategy. If you went back five, six, seven years, interest rates were a quarter of a percent, half a percent, you could borrow money and pay very little to do it. And the idea behind it was borrow the money and pay it off over five years, paying very little interest. Since that time, interest rates have continued to rise, and short-term interest rates are only slightly below long-term interest rates at this point. So one of the things I will propose is what's remaining out of that short-term borrowing, plus the highway trucks that we borrowed to purchase this week, would account for about $900,000 of short-term borrowing. I propose that of the ECS money, recall during the budget process, the ECS number came in higher than was originally projected, and the decision was made not to appropriate that into the current budget. If that money does arrive, as is expected, in May, I'm proposing that the town utilize it for two purposes. One would be to pay off, use half of the money to pay off some of the notes. We continue to work through tax sale proceeds. The recent tax sale generated over $1.1 million. We have lower-than-budget debt service as we do continue to try to find alternative ways to borrowing, and therefore save some money. We do have some money in some closed school roof projects, we're working through with the state to close out the last two, and I propose to take that money combined with about $420,000, $670,000 of additional ECS money, pool it together, and next June, instead of rolling the notes and continuing that extra strategy, simply pay them off and don't borrow again. The other piece is the security vestibule work that's ongoing at all of the schools except Berlin High. We put it together and went to the state to secure funding, which the state provided based on an estimate from a consultant, and the actual bids came in higher. And so we're about $230,000 light on what was originally budgeted, and I would propose to use $230,000 of that additional money to appropriate it to the school vestibule fund rather than borrowing. The council had authorized borrowing for the money, and that was the fallback plan, but this would be an opportunity, while not specifically reducing our current debt, would avoid new debt. So those are, those are the items that I hit in the presentation. The last thing I will point out in the slide, it's kind of a charted slide. We've got grid series competing priorities, and I think there's an opportunity that we need to take to address what the top priorities are. There's a desire to invest in infrastructure and new programs, and that makes a lot of sense. At the same time, there's a desire to maintain or lower our taxes, and there's a desire to lower the debt level. I think I've explained why there's a benefit to doing that. However, those three don't mesh. And so we, as a town, we as the Board of Ed, need, I think, some help in prioritizing what are the top areas that the town would like to focus on, because those three are colliding together at this point, given our level. So one thing I would ask, we've had discussions at the Board of Finance, I think the council and the Board of Ed, but one proposal would be to have a budget strategy meeting, not about the numbers, the mill rate increase percentage, but a strategy meeting in October with the Board of Finance, with the council, and with the Board of Ed, to, to help focus staff from both the town, general government side, and the board side. What are the priorities? What should we be delivering to you? I mean, ultimately, the objective is to deliver a budget that the elected officials and the residents feel is a good budget. Nobody puts together the budget and brings it forward to the Board of Finance, or to the council, or to the Board of Ed, with the intent of trying to produce something people don't like. Another suggestion, and this is feedback from what we heard throughout the last voting process, was having some community input sessions in October and November. So as we get into January, February, March, the Board of Ed talking through their budget in January, February, the town manager presenting the overall budget in March, then we're moving in the direction of presenting something that's at least in the ballpark of what matches with the priorities and desires of the community. And then finally, the last bullet I had on here was, as I mentioned before, appropriating the funds in May-June timeframe. And I put that timeframe out there because while the law today indicates that that extra ECS money is available, we do have a new administration coming in, and we don't know what's going to happen with the legislature, and every law does have the option of being changed. So my recommendation would be, well, I think it's a prudent strategy to get down the debt, I also think it's prudent to wait until we actually receive the funding. Hopefully not too brutal, but there are a lot of positives there, and there are opportunities.
Yes, we will focus on the positives. That's good. That's very good. Appreciate it, Kevin, for the report. Just, maybe it's in here, maybe I didn't see it, but so our, our debt service payments every year, I know, at least since I've been here, have gone up every year?
They have been over the last few years. A little over $7 million in fiscal '17, declined to $8.9 million, and that's because the last, the last batch of Berlin High School payments began to come due, the principal and interest came due there. And also an energy program that was implemented, the town borrowed a little over $10 million for an energy revitalization program, included the purchase and rehabilitation, or putting in the new lights basically on the streetlights, it included solar panels on the tops of the elementary schools, and it included energy improvements throughout town buildings. And that caused debt payments to kind of surge at particular fiscal year. This year, they've continued to increase, it's about 9.3, so smaller increase than we've seen in recent years, but we continue to have those. As we continue to do work, required renovations and replacements of bridges, roads, we will continue to have some other necessary replacements, like the Rauro Pond Dam and other things that we're required to do, and then also investments in things like the SCBA equipment for the fire department, the dispatch center, work, and critical public safety.
Can I say? Yep. I'll go.
In 2020, in other words, do we have 2020 vision, what is our, our debt service going to be then? Our payment?
It's going to be. It'll be about 9.2 million.
Okay, so we're on decline after '19?
Well, depending on what we decide to do as far as borrowing and other items, we begin to level off.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. This was very comprehensive. I just wanted to ask, just so I understood correctly, the healthy debt level is around 40 million, you said, and that equates to about 3% to 6% of our operating budget?
40 million would be about 6% of the budget.
About 6. So if we're at 96, that's about, well, almost double, so is that like 12% right now?
If you were to factor in the pension piece, we're slightly over 12%. And the challenge with that is if, if taxpayers are voting saying, this is my ceiling, as we push more debt service into that, it has no other impact than to squeeze out other, other areas that you might prefer to spend money on rather than debt payments.
Yes. I don't want to get too detailed, but you mentioned the energy agreement we entered into, it was on the council, and we proved that, and we were assured that the savings would offset the money we had to spend. Does anybody chart it? Is it working?
At this point, we have not realized that. The biggest reason for it is because it was anticipated, the solar panels, which are the single biggest driver of the savings, being able to sell credits back into the marketplace. They were expected to be operational last April, they weren't operational until late August. April to September is the prime window where basically the sun is out.
The year of the generation.
Yeah, as we generate more, especially in those summer months where students aren't in school, we're generating more energy than we use, we put it back into the system, we get credits which can then be applied against bills, you know, fall, winter.
Was the late start due to the installers or something?
Yeah, it was due to the installers.
I was very hesitant to spend this money at the time, make sure to, and I said, well, if this doesn't work, what happens? Well, we're backed by United Technologies, they got T-Pockets, they'll cover any shortage. Can we look to them to cover that shortage?
It's a performance contract, and we have met with them, and we have to chart it over a certain amount of time, and if they don't meet their goals, then there is, there is a clause where they have to, you know, make it good to us. So we've met recently, we started to get, we're starting to receive our RECs being sold on the market, so I think, I think actually we got our first confirmation in the last couple of weeks.
That should through. Thank you.
Hey, Kevin, that's somewhat good, good and bad. You know, I think we all know that, I mean, the debt's the debt, we have it, I'm not sure I would embrace it, has been quoted recently, I think, but we have to deal with it, and, you know, we have a lot of projects that we have done, and that's great, new high schools and many other things we had to do in our, in our town, so we're just at that point in our, in our debt cycle now. We'll be at the point, I'm sure, if we go back historically, we were at some low debt years, I'm sure, going back, right? I don't know how far back.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, so.
Absolutely. And Berlin is not the only community to go through this. There are other communities that are, that are doing very well, who've done it as well. You have the high school project alone, as I mentioned, the $40 million ceiling, the high school project alone, we borrowed $47 million, but you have to balance that against the needs of the community and the needs of the school.
Absolutely. No, we needed it, we needed it a long time ago, and, you know, we just have to pay for it, and we will, and hopefully we'll get this thing paid down, and we'll come up with some creative ways, like you just have pointed out in here, which makes some sense, so we don't have to maybe borrow as much for the next couple of years till the payments go down. And so, that's great, that's great that we're all have heard it tonight, the Board of Finance and the council. And I would agree that while the Board of Finance is here in their entirety, I think, other than one member's missing, we would look to Mr. Chair. other than one member's missing, we would look to Mr. Chair, doing that strategy meeting at some point, Sam. I guess October, maybe. We can pick something, maybe mid-October, see what we can do with the... And we'll talk, Jack, if you could talk to the Board of Ed, see if we can get together and start with that, and at least get maybe all of us on somewhat of the same chapter, maybe, or maybe on the same page if we can. And then maybe after that, we can do some, a couple of community meetings and see what priorities our community wants and what they tell us, and then I guess we can go forward and try and build our budget from that. So if that makes sense, if that makes sense, Mr. Chair, do you? We're good?
No problem.
Yeah, we'll figure out those dates, and we'll move forward with that and do the best we can. Any other comments? You guys good?
Good.
All right, great. So number three.
Agenda item number three is a request for transfer of funds from the Fire Truck Fund to Communications Equipment, and also requesting waive the personal requirements. Fire Department radio system has not been reliable recently, and we have to start spending money to upgrade it. Jim Simon is here to discuss what we need to do.
Mr. Simon. What? More money?
I got my white shirt on.
That's good. So what's the problem? Can't talk on the radio?
Well, we can talk when nobody hears.
Oh, well, that's a problem. It's like here, it's the same thing. We talk, nobody can hear us, and nobody wants to hear us. So what's the problem? No, we understand you need a radio system.
So the radio system's 20 years old. It was, it's not 20 years old yet. Let me say it was purchased in 2001, installed in 2002, and it was scheduled to be replaced in 2020, 2021, which made it 20 years old. But like everything, we find that as we age, some things happen. And I don't know if it's because of the changeover of other radio systems and the movement of proponents, or it's the aging of our equipment, but over the past year, we've had some failures. And those failures, we brought in the radio people to come in, overlook everything and service everything, and they identified one piece of equipment that, and that's the MTR, which is the main transmitting radio, that has some bad cards in it, and those bad cards should be replaced. Now, we can replace those bad cards and still have a 20-year-old system or a 20-year-old piece of equipment that something else could go wrong with, or we can replace the unit, and as long as that unit is compatible with what we're going to do in the future, it would probably be the more prudent thing. The other piece is called a combiner, and a combiner, I'm going to call it more like a router, okay? It takes the information that comes in from different voting stations or repeater stations and analyzes that and then sends it back to the MTR. That has been giving us some problems, cutting in and cutting out, and it's time to get both of those pieces of equipment replaced so that we can bring back a more reliable system until we move forward replacing that system, the complete system. Now, the two pieces of equipment that we're asking for would not be replaced with the complete system. They're going to be compatible with the new system so that it's just that we're purchasing a couple of pieces of equipment that are needed now to make a better, reliable system. Going back to Anna Johnson, Anna Johnson was a finance director here a long time ago, back in 2000, 2001. When we did some sales of fire apparatus, she created this fire department account, which was originally for fire replacement or upgrading of fire equipment and our apparatus. And we have the money sitting there, and this is just what that was created for, and that's why we're utilizing that account to move forward.
Okay. For the safety of our firemen, for the safety of our town, obviously, we have to communicate. We know that. We learned that the hard way with the police department recently, and we don't want to learn that the hard way here with the fire department, so we are here for this. So we're just going to move some funds around, is that right? Is that what we're looking at?
We're going to transfer almost $28,000, and then we're going to put it into an account for purchase of equipment, and we're going to purchase a brand-new MTR, main transmit radio, and a brand-new combiner and have them installed. Along with that, we're going to, where the MTR is, main transmit radio, we're going, it needs another rack, which it stands on, and then we're going to replace the battery backup for that system.
Yeah, that sounds good. Just out of curiosity, so when we get down the road another year or two, so that major overhaul you're talking about, this will obviously fit into that system, but just rough ballpark, if you know?
We don't know. You know, and we budgeted the capital, we drew a number out, and that number's a million dollars.
Okay.
And now there's a committee beginning to sit down to look at each piece of equipment we're going to replace and begin to plan out. I would have to say it's going to be considerably less than that.
Oh, okay.
All right. But I can't give you that, you know, I don't have a figure.
No, but that's...
I have a sense that says it's going to be less than that.
Yeah, but I mean, that's at least a rough ballpark. Then what did it cost for the police? The police was three? Three million?
No, 1.8.
1.8, okay. Yeah, okay, yeah.
When the police department updated their system, they have, you know, they updated the main dispatch system.
Right, right.
They also updated all the microwave system, which are communication links. We're currently utilizing those communication links that they updated. So when they updated it, we were able to utilize those so that the system is more... So some of their components that they purchased weren't only for the police department, but we were able to utilize them, which means that they'll come off of our rolls when we go to replace them.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, is there interoperability and crossover between the fire and the police?
There is interoperability and crossover through the main dispatch. In fact, this past weekend, we had the fair, and all communications on the fairground were both police, fire, and EMS on one channel.
And they're all patched in.
So they were able to operate that way.
Great. Thanks. Any other questions? Bearing none, I'll take a couple of motions, I guess.
Okay. I move to approve the transfer of $27,841.61 from the vehicle reserve account in the Fire Truck Fund to the communications equipment account to cover the cost of upgrading critical components of the fire radio system.
Second on that.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Bearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, so move.
Second, I move to waive the town's purchasing requirements in order to purchase the necessary communications equipment from Utility Communications in Hampton, Connecticut, utilizing the State of Connecticut DAS Contract Number 14 PSX 0073 for an amount not to exceed $27,841.60 as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second. Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Bearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Office of Finance Board from Sam.
Oh, one time.
Okay. Agenda item number four is the acceptance of the conservation easement for Crystal Brook Holdings Company LLC. Mark Hasutowski is here to discuss the acceptance of this easement.
Anyway.
So in May this year, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the subdivision of a 4.2-inch parcel at the corner, the northwest corner of Savage Hill in Sprucebrook into a five-lot subdivision, which includes an open space parcel and a conservation easement. The easement, the conservation easement will be basically essentially to the purpose of open space, and most of that land is, goes over wetlands anyways. Both the Wetlands Commission approved the subdivision plan, and the Conservation Commission endorsed the acquisition of open space and the conservation easement.
Where's that? So what's that, is that across from Pistol Creek?
It's across. The clubhouse is situated on the south side of Sprucebrook.
Oh, okay, yeah. What is that? What'd you say, five lot?
Five lots.
Nice piece of property there, huh? Or a home, that way? Okay.
I have a question. So the conservation easement, you were saying that's for open space, but landowner doesn't own that property themselves? It's not part of the open space that's...
Well, it's, it'll be preserved in a natural state.
Correct, but the homeowner does own it.
Correct, correct. The easement goes over four of the parcels, and each owner owns that portion of the easement, but the use of it is limited to a natural condition, with the exception of three of the lots use a section of the easement for, as part of the drainage plan. So just so water can spill over.
Yeah, you know, the conservation easements are great. I have one, too, but when the trees start dying, we got to take them down. I hope that at least, if I had some forethought, I would have the developer take down any dead trees so the homeowner's not stuck with it after. It's not too, I don't know if it's too late, but I mean, you know, the town wants, and we always want to preserve our trees, and we all do, and that's what the conservation easement is for, but it becomes pretty expensive, you know, to the tune of one of my trees cost me $5,000 because it was up on a hill, you had to get a crane. So I mean, had that been taken down when there was no house there, you know, I mean, it's just something that, I don't know how the town handles that, but it was kind of disturbing to some of the neighbors. I don't know if that happened in your neighborhood, but ours, just whatever, for whatever reason, a bunch of trees got disturbed, and then we were stuck, you know, paying for it because they would have fallen and hit our house or, you know, whatever, but...
I think one of the things that happened, though, is when we bought the property, it wasn't explained to us very well.
Yeah, that's true, too.
So you don't really understand what it means, and I really believe that the responsible contractor who sells it needs to be very explicit and tell the homeowner what the conservation easement really means.
Yeah, there will be a document filed on the deed for each of these parcels that will outline the, what you can and can't do in this area, so due diligence will identify this document.
Hopefully their attorney explains. You're right, a lot of neighbors didn't know what the heck that was, right? Oh, yeah. You find out 10 years later when it's too late. Anyway, okay. Any other questions? Bearing none, take a motion.
Okay. Move to accept the 37,024-square-foot conservation easement area as depicted on the subdivision Mylar map for Pistol Brook Holdings LLC, prepared by J.L. Surveying, dated August 17, 2018, as approved with conditions by the Planning and Zoning Commission on May 10, 2018.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Bearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move.
Agenda item number five is the acceptance of open space. Pistol Brook Holdings Company LLC, again, Sprucebrook Road, and again, Mark is here to explain the acceptance of the open space.
As part of this subdivision approval, there was a 19,000-square-foot parcel that would be conveyed to the town. It is adjacent to the Pistol Creek Park, and also in this area, there's actually an encroachment of one of the car paths onto the property. So with the acquisition of this parcel, it'll eliminate that encroachment as the town property after that.
Okay. Any further questions? Is there any maintenance associated with that besides the car path?
Well, not outside of any other use of the land. Most of that property parcel is, comprises of wetlands, so there shouldn't be too much work in that area done anyways.
Okay. Any further questions? Now we'll take a motion.
Okay. Move to accept the 19,000-square-foot parcel as depicted on a subdivision Mylar map for Pistol Brook Holdings LLC, prepared by J.L. Surveying, dated August 17, 2018, as approved with conditions by the Planning and Zoning Commission on May 10, 2018.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions? Bearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move.
Agenda item number six is authorization to apply for a Connecticut recreational trails grant in the amount of $132,000 for Pistol Creek. We previously received a trails grant and are doing some work up at Pistol Creek, and are requesting approval to, or authorization to apply for additional grant money so that we continue to work of rehabilitating the trails and property in that area. Both Chris Edge and Jim Mahoney are here to discuss the details.
Jim? No worries.
A moi, a moi.
Good.
We're on a Pistol Creek theme here.
Yeah, let's keep rolling with Pistol Creek.
Greetings. So, yes, as Jack explained, we did the first grant. We were going to try to repave most of the trails, where there was one section we weren't repaving with the first grant. Prices came in higher than we hoped and than we estimated, so we have to, we had to cut back on the scope. And now another recreational trails grant offering has come out. We figured it makes sense to finish the job, and this would basically, except I could show you, these sections on this west side would be done on the perimeter and the interior. Those two sections would be repaved. And we're also, we wanted to do signage in the first phase, and we didn't have any money for it, so we put in some signage allowance, and working with Public Grounds, they had recommended a piece of equipment to help, you know, with maintenance of our expanding open space. So since we have the opportunity to apply for 80% grant for these things, it seemed to make sense to put it all together. And again, as Mark said, this trail is, these trails are right next to the new land that we just, yeah, acquisition of. Yeah, I think that my experience is that these are well-used trails, and people use them for a variety of purposes, walking, you know, take their children out on bicycles or cross-country skiing, there's all kinds of different uses. So I think they're well-used by the community, and they would appreciate it if we could finish repaving.
Jim, this won't affect the cross-country circuit at all, right?
No. There was, the issue, we had an issue with the cross-country because we were trying, with this year's project, it's already approved. You know, we're trying to start the project earlier, didn't, you know, obviously came in over budget, et cetera, et cetera. We just signed a contract with B&amp;W Paving, but they've agreed to start the project after the cross-country season is over, so it's a win-win. And they, it's not, for them, it's not a big project, so they can come in and they still should be efficient before the winter.
Thank you.
Jim, the first part that was done, is that where they also had it so that it's handicapped accessible?
It's not done yet, but that first part we are doing, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And that's the one that'll start in late October, and it'll be the handicapped parking lot, the handicapped accessible trail, which will be the first of its kind in Berlin.
Great.
And then the other trail on the eastern side, which actually is, again, that section that Mark pointed out that was encroaching before we agreed to take the parcel tonight. So that's the area we started with. And again, when we looked at prioritization, we felt like the handicapped parking area and handicapped trail were, you know, were real, the priorities for us, let's do that first. But now, if we have the opportunity to apply for this additional grant, hopefully we'll get the whole thing done.
Great, sounds wonderful. Thank you, appreciate it.
Great. Further questions? Bearing none, we'll take a motion.
Okay. Move to authorize the town manager to file an application with the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection for recreational trails grant in an amount not to exceed $132,000, and to authorize a 20% local match in the amount of $33,000 from the fee in lieu of open space account if the grant is offered, subject to the approval of the Board of Finance.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Bearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move.
Agenda item number seven is request for authorization with the town manager to sign a contract amendment with cardinal engineering for surveys of the properties on Main Street. This is the area along Main Street where we're redoing part of Main Street. We're also looking at constructing a parking lot behind the buildings in a triangular area. This would be a town parking lot, and we lease the property from the store owners for a dollar, and we would construct a parking lot there. We've done quite a bit of engineering work to this point. We need to do some additional surveys so that we can work out the contracts with each one of them. We believe we have all, or almost all of the building owners in line with this. We've had several meetings with the shop owners along Main Street. We've held meetings at Ketsu Pizza, so we've been right down there talking with them about this. this, we've got their input, both Chris Edge and Jim Mahoney here to talk about the details of how they want to work this out. And we're requesting also to waive the bidding process, to continue to work with Cardinal, it wouldn't at this point make sense to switch engineering firms in the middle of this project, they've done all the work up to this point, so requesting that you waive the bidding requirements.
Are the property owners and the business owners happy?
Uh, well, Jack and Chris have been more meeting with them, so I, I'll leave that to Jack.
Pretty happy with this?
They, they're much happier than they were when we started this process, they were, as you, I think you all know, they were not happy with the, the results of the first part of the project. So we've, we've, we've actually, we've engaged them, they are part of the process, they've given us input along, their, their, their primary concern, and Jim, you can, you know, enter this also, is they feel they have lost a significant amount of parking with the project there. This, what we're proposing is, is our view of how you can bring, keep, keep Main Street somewhat in the form of, we are gonna make some modifications, which they requested, but also we'll give them additional parking and improve that, that, that center island, because right now, if you look behind the buildings, it's not that attractive. So we're going, we're going to spruce it up and make a parking lot there, we'd work it out with them, where they, we would lease the property back from them, and, and we would maintain it. It's, it's a, it's a process that other towns have used, I'm familiar with it, in Litchfield, they've done it there, so it's a way of being able to utilize off-street parking and improve a parking that we have for, for businesses.
Paper, right, that's not paper.
That's not paper, no, it's, it's stone, gravel, mud.
Plonology, yeah, yeah, oh, that's great. So, I'm sorry, just wanted to make sure they're happy, because I know they have not been happy with some of the improvements, unfortunately.
Yeah, just to count again, the, and the reason for some of the lost parking on the street, go back to, you know, the original situation was that you didn't have really conformant parking spaces, for one thing, plus you had, you know, unsafe conditions where you had parking spaces that packed into crosswalks and things like that. So once you, what, if we're gonna do the project, we have to be safe about it, and once you made all those changes, you know, you lost some parking spaces, so we're just trying to do the best we can to, to make them back up, if we can.
Jim or Jack, how many spots are we gonna realize back there?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, there's a, on your package, there is a, an eye charge.
Yeah. 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 Yeah, this behind.
But I think I write, I think about twenty-one, twenty-one.
Yeah, it's adjacent to the, the drive-in window.
Yeah.
As you go down.
Some of the spaces, I mean, it's part of the agreement, a, a number of the spaces will be dedicated, we're, we're leasing the property back, but each building owner may want one or two spots next to a building to be dedicated to them, and that is a concept also that I've seen in other buildings. We get twenty-one spaces, but we may lose a couple, I don't want to say lose them, they, but they would be dedicated to that particular building. I think it's a reasonable combination.
Any parking meters?
At this point, I don't think there's any planned parking meters, normally parking meters aren't.
Well, we do have a revenue problem, so I don't know.
Jack, so, uh, we would make, obtain possession of it through a lease, correct?
A lease, yeah.
So would we be maintaining it then?
Yes.
So we'd have to plow it and?
Yes.
Have we kept, done a rough calculation on how much the cost of the town would be?
No, I have not, we've not done it at this point. It's similar to, you're familiar with Al's, the parking nets along Main, West Street, Litchfield.
Right, behind like the courthouse back there.
Yeah, that's, that is, that's what we modeled after.
Yeah. And this is like another step of the process, and obviously we've been coming back, if we can succeed and put it all together and get all, everybody signed off, we'll be coming back to the council for approval to enter into all these agreements, you know, fund the project, et cetera. So we're, we're giving you kind of, you're involved step by step as you authorize the funding.
I'd be curious to hear at the next step, the fiscal impact, what we calculate it to be, just.
Yep.
Okay, anyone else? Jim, Jim, yeah, Charlie?
I just want to say, if we want to have any hope of a business district, I drove through Southern yesterday and it says, "Business district this way," and I thought, wouldn't it be wonderful if Berlin could have a sign like that?
Yeah.
If you want to create a central area, you got to provide parking, I think it'd be a great idea.
Yeah, plus that central area, I mean, again, we, we always talk about, we don't have a downtown, you know, we have a couple of different areas now, but that area, right, has always historically kind of been a mess, quite frankly, right in the back there, and so it's nice to finally clean it up and make that, you know, nice little Kensington Village area, so, yeah, that's, that's good. Okay? Yeah?
Okay, I will move to waive the town's bidding procedures and approve the use of nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars from the steep Main Street, streetscape improvement space two, subject to the Board of Finance approval, and to authorize the town manager to execute a contract amendment with Cardinal Engineering for nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to assist with the research and mapping for the properties affected by a proposed public parking area on Main Street.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so move.
Okay, agenda item number eight is the approval to purchase a grinder pump from Russell Resources, with the bidding requirement to purchase, for the purchase installation of the pump. Uh, this pump is needed for the Berlin Turnpike Sewer Pump Station, you authorized one, I think recently, in the, within the last few months, to, to purchase the first one, well, now number two is needed to, to be purchased. And Ray is here to discuss the acquisition of, of that pump.
Ray, show and tell, that's great, we'd like that, well, we're not sure what the show and tell is yet, but hopefully.
Uh, Dave, that's like that, and I'm gonna continue the tradition, so.
All right, as long as it's.
I'll get into these a little later, but with regard to the grinder pump, unfortunately, we were hoping to save one of them, and we have two, the Berlin Turnpike is our major pumping station, off the Berlin Turnpike by the Blue Ox there. Unfortunately, the other one burned out just as quickly, so, so now we need another one. And every time I think about this podium size, where is the pump size, and that's thirty-seven thousand dollars, I think of a brand-new car, so it's equivalent to that. But unfortunately, we have to spend it, and it's the only way to deal with it at this point in time, so we're ready.
Okay, any, you guys got any questions? Now, I know you explained it the last time you were here, and unfortunately, here again, yes, sir?
Is that only for Berlin customers, or is that co-related with this?
Uh, actually, what we do is, the Berlin pumping station takes sewage from both Worthington, Worthington and Kensington as well, so we portion, portionally pay them over their usage over the year, so they will be paying a portion of it, so it's a good question.
The alternative is not good, but I think Ray, I think Kate just reminded me, we do, part of this, the issue is that people flush down the toilets and those things now, that we didn't flush several years ago, and, and Ray has described as at length in previous meetings, that we get these long daisy chains of materials that build up in there.
It's like a carpeting, actually, yeah.
Yeah, and, and without a shrotter pump, it, it binds up in there, and, and our staff has to go down to a twenty or thirty-foot hole, pull this pump out, pull this materials out, they have to put it back in. That's a desirable job.
Never really think about it, you just flush it and it goes.
Yeah, but we think about it.
Your whole work is to come down and see it at work sometime, I think that'd be unbelievable, you wouldn't believe what they have to do to clean out a pump, so it's, it's amazing issue, and so thrilled that we have a way with staff to deal with it, so, I think it's a positive.
And Kate has pointed out that we have information on the website and on Facebook, you know, requesting people not do this, but the problem is pervasive, and when Ray, when we first started hearing about it, I was like, you gotta be kidding, and then as we, as Ray has enlightened us, more and more, more and more sewer districts are, are having the same problem, and it's, it's a common problem, so, you know, the tech, now we're trying, as with most cases, the engineering side now is trying to catch up with the, with the consumer side and see what we can do to fix this. One, one of the answers is, is these pumps, but as Ray said, we, we just put, we just put a brand-new one in, and now we're putting another one in.
This is basically a Band-Aid, because we are looking into it, and Jack was really alluding into this situation, we are looking at major renovation for this facility. We have two pumping stations, as you know, the two, two largest one, the Demme Road, which serves a good portion of NDC, and then Berlin Pumping Station, which serves us as well as Kensington and, and Worthington, so these have to be done, and I think we're looking at it, now I'll pass out some information later, because we're looking at, within the next few years, it has to be modified.
A lot of good news tonight.
We'll have more, so.
Okay, I'll take a motion on this.
Move to authorize the town manager to waive the sealed bid requirements and award the purchase and installation of a new grinder pump from Russell Resources, not to exceed forty thousand dollars, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so move.
Agenda item nine is, is, I think, a response to my report last meeting, we got to a conversation about the water service, water sewer service providers for the town, which includes the Berlin Water Control Commission, Kensington Fire District, and Worthington Fire District, and Ray has been, Ray's, has extensive background in this, both in the town of Berlin, but also with the state of Connecticut, so Ray is here to give you, I think it's essentially about water sewer one-on-one, it's just a forty thousand foot level of view of, of how you get serviced with water sewer.
Uh, I'd like to recognize a few people first, Bruce LaRoche is our commissioner, chair, chair, lady commissioner, Tom Lasker's also the commissioner, Jim Horrible, deputy director, and our new deputy director, Mike Ahern, who just started, I, I trained him in two hours' time, he got everything. And Art Powers was here, who is the chair for Worthington Fire District, but he's since his clone, so anyway.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Excuse me?
Welcome to all of that.
Oh, thank you. Uh, and, and I don't know where to go with this, because actually, Jack has asked me to, a while back last year, to, to take a look at this, and what I did is I developed a, a report, extensive report, using what I could find in the files, it was a very interesting situation, because I found a lot of information, because the consolidation process had been attempted many, many times, and then in one time, back in nineteen ninety-six, it came out, actually, the town began spending money, and Camp Dresser McKee, who did a partial report, and was able to find a good portion of it, only had a draft, that's it, and then the town council pulled out, and said that they never completed it, they started looking at the financial elements, they started looking at the positive things that, that would happen, the administrative costs, which are duplication services within Worthington and Kensington and so forth, but let me start with the basics. This is Kensington, this is Worthington, and where the tan area, just recently, and Jack knows because he participated with me, we are part of the Water Utility Coordinating Committee, it goes from Brandy right down to South Central Regional Water Authority, that corridor is, is our planning area. He and I went to many meetings, Worthington and Kensington were not represented at any one of those meetings, over a year and a half's process, not one. We took on the responsibility of claiming the existing area for ourselves, because Meriden, Middle Town, or Southerntown, or anybody else could have claimed it, Connecticut Water Company could have claimed it, Regional Water Authority, anybody who wanted it in the state, but we claimed it, and we, and we're in the process of having it. This portion of the area is primarily watershed for New Britain, this portion of the watershed is for Meriden, so we only have a small area that actually is developable and then also expandable in terms of water supply and sewage. Oddly enough, there were three districts now, but there were actually four. East Berlin Fire District was apparently a small envy, I don't, I don't exactly know how it was developed, but East Berlin, Worthington, and Kensington were basically incorporated at the same time, about nineteen twenty-two. East Berlin went defunct, and I'll talk about that in a minute, but the fact, fact is that the Berlin town took it over, and then Kensington and Worthington still continued to operate, Berlin Water Control was created around nineteen sixty-six. Now, as Jack mentioned, I worked for the State Health Department for forty years, most of that portion of it, I was either number two or number one. I was the section chief for a good portion, and I had the opportunity, I became chief engineer for over twenty years, so I know the state wise pretty much, there is no municipality that has three small municipal systems within itself. I have, we have a hundred sixty-nine towns, and not one I can remember. Now, that doesn't mean that there aren't public water systems in other towns, multiple systems, there are, but not three municipal.
It's just something in the water, why we do it so much.
It's something pretty odd, actually, and over the, over my history, the Health Department, everybody would ask me, because I'm from Berlin, why do you have three? I, I could not answer that, and actually, Jack Ross even complicated the process, although he operated as Worthington Fire District representative, he was also with the Berlin Water Control. So, so the files, I, I find out, sometimes are intermingled, and, and that's a little bit disconcerting, because I'm not sure who's had he had on at the time, and I'm not gonna belittle anything he did, I mean, he worked hard, but the point of it is, it, it was a little confusing, and it's confusing to a lot of folks, because when I came on board the very first day, I wanted to quit, because they started telling me, you know, the interconnections, we had customers from one place that Kensington has, but was reimbursing us, we had Kensington customers we were reimbursing to Kensington. Worthington had customers, and I just looked at this, I can't believe it, it's like a spaghetti factory, everything was intermingled, and it was very problematic. But the problem was, is nobody wanted to give up their existing conditions, and I could understand that. When I went back to look for the ordinances, I don't think any of the districts are operating under the existing ordinances that they were allowed to operate under. They're not fulfilling the entire requirements, that's another issue. So I think that's, that's another issue that has to be explored, because I think that's part of the failure. The Berlin Water Control, and two gentlemen here, you're actually longer than me, in terms of the commissionship, basically have subsidized Kensington and Worthington. I, I looked at records, on and on and on, there's records indicating, oh, thank you for allowing this to go through, because now we can expand our system. It's either Worthington or Kensington, so the town actually paid to help them improve their existing systems. And that, you know, as a town taxpayer, it bothers me a lot, and also I have to be on the Worthington Fire District, and I get taxed, so if I use one gallon of water at, at all, I get a tax, a real estate tax, my wife and I couldn't figure this out for years, real estate tax for four hundred and fifty dollars, and, and that's if I didn't use any of it. So any of those customers on Kensington and Worthington are taxed a real estate tax, so your house goes up, your tax goes up, so it maybe looked like the wor, of the water sewer rates don't go up, but the Berlin's rates do go up, because most of them depend fifty to sixty percent of their, their income is from the tax, it's not from their water and sewer rates. Berlin Water Control is exclusively from the rates, and I gotta pass out the, because I know this came up at the last meeting, I'm gonna pass out the proposal we have for rate structure, and you can see how detailed it is, and we do have a plan, and this is my other problem with this, is because I don't see a plan from Worthington and Kensington, I keep asking them about that, but they won't even answer questions, Mr. Powers, I was hoping would say, we have an outstanding letter to hand from May, which is never replied to, and basically, this is part of the problem, the communications. Prior to this meeting, I got calls that said that we should meet in October, so we're gonna be meeting in October, which is good, but I don't know where it's gonna go, but the point of it is, is that there is a communication issue that needs to be done. All three of our systems should know what we're doing, so we should be working together and not working independently, and I know for, for a fact, Kensington and Worthington, when I first came on board, we were doing re-aligning project for Wiltshire Square, they went ahead and raised, raised their rates, but then they reneged on what they were gonna do. And, and if anybody's done any kind of business realizes that part of the cost is getting mobilization, getting the company there so that they can do the job, that's an expensive process, so once they're there, they can be, it's a little cheaper for them to do a little bit more re aligning. They bought that, and now similarly, this time too, we're doing a major re aligning of the Bultcher Brook, two-point-two miles roughly, basically, we're just gonna assess them just like Mad Massit did to us, and Mad Massit's plant went in, they said, here, you need to pay this, and that's it, so we're gonna do the same thing, and we have a DPC, a D, a deep loan on that. Oddly enough, too, Worthington is an example, too, took out a loan, USDA loaned for four hundred fifty thousand dollars, they paid for one meter, they put five other meter stations in. The irony here is, they meter their water in, and at the end of the year, or it was six months when they get paid, they sell more water than we give them. So I saw the negative number, and I said, I don't understand this, where's this water coming from? It's coming from us, but it's un-metered, and before, we were not even, I'm making them pay for it, because it's water that went in, one of the valves is open, and we need to find out which valve is open, but there's no physical way that they can sell more water than we send it, other, other than having some other connection that exists, and both Jack and I are concerned too, because when they put the meters in, somebody didn't think about the entire process of flow, and, and most of the engineers here will recognize that you need to have a chlorine residual in the distribution system. Well, in Worthington. Well, in Worthington's system, for example, there isn't any water. It's stacked. There's no condition where you have chlorine residual. Chlorine residual maintains the bacteriological level low. The reality is, is that water is not still. There's always some form of bacteria present. The whole point of it is not to have water that has anything that can create a health issue. And we're concerned because the thing is, it shows that distribution pattern within the system is not functioning properly. They'd have to put in probably another couple meter sites in order to make it flow right. But that's another issue. We've brought that up several times. We've done it. No reaction. I just want to point out something too. I brought this out, as I said, Dave was excited. The last time I brought it out, hope I get the same scenario this time. This is a pipe taken out of the East Berlin section. Now, it looks better than it did before. And the reason being is when it was first taken out, this whole iron area, this is cast iron. This is one of the older pipes. Basically, it has accumulation of iron growth. And this is, this is a six inch line. And basically, all it had was only a two inch opening. Because the whole thing, once it gets swelled up, it basically closes it off. Iron manganese bacteria, this is what they reside in. They're not harmful to humans, but the problem is they create problems with the distributional system. This is what, what we have in our distribution system and is typically common. This is called, this is ductile iron, which is a stronger particular material, also cement lined. So you can see that this is an older pipe. Look at the difference in the situation here. This is a good portion of what our distribution system is. So somebody had the good foresight in any way to buy the right pipe and to use it. This is the kind of pipe I'm afraid that East Berlin has still. And I'm gonna talk about water and sewer pipes. So the water pipes, we need to go back. This is called, this C factor here is probably about a hundred and ten, which means it's got a very nice flow. The C factor's about thirty. It doesn't slow. And this is why you get this coloration. So if you have a fire dam or something, this whole thing gets riled up and it gets into everybody's system. It has to be flushed down. And it doesn't go away because it accumulates to circulation. And the sewer pipes, on the other hand, I did a little bit of an analysis because Camp Drescher McKee, back in nineteen ninety-six, did an evaluation of infiltration and flow for the town, included three, the three systems. Interestingly enough, we have about thirty-six and a half miles of pipe, sewer pipe now. But less than ten percent is actually not PVC. PVC is probably the standard now. It's basically the best quality pipe. And unfortunately, I didn't bring out the pipes, but I'll see if I can get a copy, pieces of it. Thirty-three point six miles with the Kensington. Seventy percent of their system is either asbestos cement, which I would not bring in because it has a health hazard, or vitrified clay, which is, if you can think of a pot, basically, that's the same type of material. And basically, concrete, reinforced concrete in a few places, but it's a concrete pipe. And they come in small segments. And Worthington Fire District has a very similar situation. They have sixty-seven percent of this, of the system is that. So we're fairly outstanding in our water and sewer, sewer systems. These two, and that's where I'm gonna link to, is my biggest concern is that we're gonna end up, if both of these systems fail down the road, we're gonna be the ones holding them to the back, basically. And that's exactly what happened with East Berlin. And I'm afraid it could happen with Kensington and Worthington. Now, the interesting part, when I went back and looked at one of the annual reports for Worthington, in their USDA loan, is if they fail, it says the town's gonna take on the responsibility. If they fail paying the loan, it's gonna be our, I don't know how that got in here, but.
Who signed that one?
That's a good question. But it was an irony because I didn't, I didn't pick up on it until I had seen the report.
How recent is that loan? Is that a current loan?
Yes, it's an existing loan. And actually.
When did they pay?
Well, Kevin's not here, but the thing is Kevin walked in my office and asked me, what bought this loan? And I said, what do you mean loan? Apparently, they were delinquent in paying it, although they did pay it. There was some question about delinquency in terms of doing it. But if they fail to pay it, it will be the town's responsibility to pay it.
Jim Horrible sent me a. When was that?
About ten years ago, somewhere approximately.
Well, I gave you a lot of information, but I wanted to point out too that part of this is not knowing what either other entity is doing. Kensington and their, and their annual meeting said that they did a couple hundred thou, a couple hundred feet. Well, a couple hundred feet is a drop in bucket for what they need to do. One of my other issues is the fact that they're so reluctant to basically work with us on projects where we do wanna pay for it and we want them to help us out or to do a little bit more in their own systems. This is a Berlin issue. It's not really a political issue at all. It's really a town issue. So I don't wanna make it a political issue. It shouldn't be.
No, I mean, I guess the question that comes to my mind, and I've heard this since I've been here, and I know we tried to have some meetings a while ago, and it did appear that the other districts didn't wanna meet for whatever reason. We just sort of, you know, didn't work at that time. But they've collected, you know, I remember growing up, we were in the Kensington Fire District. So they've collected this tax and money and whatever they've collected from their customers for, since nineteen twenty, whatever. Twenty-two, nineteen twenty-two. My first question is, where did all the money go? If they didn't, you know, just looking at from my own background.
Mill rates changed several times. And I bet you, to tell you the truth, most people would not even recognize, the mill rate's been at the highest four a lot of times. And you know how people in town are when the town raises its mill rate even a fraction.
Their mill rate for those districts?
Yeah. And then currently, the mill rate for Worthington is one point seven. It went down from one point eight to one point seven. And Kensington's is one point one mill rate. But it could fluctuate. If you ever go to these annual meetings, there's nobody in the audience. Last time I went to the Worthington Fire District, because I'm a member, my wife and I were the only ones in the audience. So it's a locked organization, basically. You know, a few people wanna come in and vote somebody in. They do it and then they go home and that's it.
Yeah, they're run by just their boards, right?
They have three, three board members.
And they're, but they're chartered by the state, correct?
They're chartered under an ordinance, yeah. And in the original ordinance, I don't have with me, but it's an interesting one because it goes further than water and sewer service. It goes into a lot of services that the town provides. That was a little stunning factor to me because I know they don't do that, so.
No, by ordinance of the town or by the state?
No, the state.
The state ordinance?
The original one that actually set them up.
The state did.
Yes.
And then.
Board members are paid, right?
Excuse me?
Are they paid, board members?
I think they are. That's another issue too, because from my perspective, we think that they're paid very well for an hour a month or whatever it is.
Who oversees, so who oversees them? Like who audits them?
Basically, the commission members of the three commissioners.
Nobody audits their books every year?
Well, they do have an audit.
But internally?
But when I started looking at the duplication services administrative, being the location, legal, whether they're engineering services or other services, it turns out to be a lot of money. Maybe it wasn't back in the nineties or eighties, but it is significant now. And it's a substantial amount of money. I could very well see another million dollars that we could put into infrastructure rather than to put into duplication. And that's a town service because the better we get our capable serving of town, our economic growth would be better. And there's still areas in town that need to be developed and that could be developed. We put in a brand new well. We painted, we painted the tank. We did, put grinder pumps in. We've done, we've been, we've had a regular process where we actually look. Before Jack came, we had a five-year, which is current with everybody, a five-year program, which detailed. And Jack asked us to go to ten years, which is good because now we have a ten-year view, basically, of what we need to do. Every year, there's something that's needed to be done. Even this main here has to be scoured out and re-lined. And it's gonna cost about three hundred thousand dollars.
I can't get out of my head that they signed a contract and they, they were able to bind the town to.
Yeah, I was surprised too. I don't know exactly how that happened.
I don't understand how they would.
And it was just a little footnote. It says. If they fail, if they fail to pay, the town takes it, so.
Maybe it's too long of a discussion for.
Oh, it is. I think you need a workshop personally. I did. And at Jack's behest, I went back in the last December. I spent a little time. Now, like I said, I went through the files as best I can. If you go down to my office, you'll see, there are tons of files. There's tons of reports I haven't read and so forth. But what I did, what was able to glean, is glean a lot of information and backed it up with information. Our own mayor at the town at the time, Art Powers, back in, back in the seventy, eighties, she was suggesting that we take over Worthington. But what happened was is that legislation wouldn't allow it. Legislation said that you had to clear your liabilities and then the town could take you over. Well, the legislation has changed. It says now that the town can take you over, even if you have a liability. It's up to the town to make that determination whether they wanna take you over or not.
Now, that was one of the things I asked.
That's a big, that's a significant change.
Four or five years ago, is, you know, what kind of loans are out there? And at the time, he told me there was one point three, one point five million dollars personal loan. And that to me is scary besides.
Yeah.
Any infrastructure loans. I mean, he said that at our council meeting. I mean, besides the employees and everything else you have to deal with.
And.
It would be nice to know.
Life's more complicated maybe because we, we have, and our, our brackets are really open, pretty much open because of the town. We're transparent in the information we're providing. And basically, we have a darn good program. Dave Thorne downstairs does all our G I S, GPS, or everything that we put on board. We make sure that it goes onto record so that we can retrieve it. And so, and then we have books where we're showing our water sewer locations and so forth. I don't see the same thing in the other two entities.
So can we do this? Can we, I mean, there's, you gave us a ton of information, a lot to think about. We appreciate that and we need to hear it. So maybe we can pick another.
What I'd like to suggest is I'm gonna pass out the proposal for a rate study, just to show you, again, not so much to overwhelm you, but to show you that it's not done hilt to scalp. It's not, we just need five percent. It's not like that. We have looked, and our consultants looked at this very carefully and tried to sell us all because the thing is, he says, listen, you have to do something serious here because all the projects you have, you're gonna have to have a rate increase. Water rate has not increased, you know, over nine years, I think. And I'm not sure why, but anyway, it hasn't increased. Sewer rates only increased because Mad Massit was increasing. So we really never took enough money for ourselves for additional operation. So that's been one of the problems.
So this rate increase, whatever it ends up being, is for the Berlin.
It's for Berlin Water Control. This is our, our best vision of what we wanna do over the next ten-year period. Actually, a five-year period is probably more realistic.
But the water, the other two districts flows in and around our system, right?
Oh, definitely.
So. So that's, that's part of the problem, right, Ray?
Exactly.
That's a good one.
Let me quiz at the end of this.
Yeah, oh boy, I hope not. That stuff, yeah. So.
Well, what I'd like to do is, and you were great. I'd have, I'd have the report. And then Jack's the only one that's actually seen the whole report in its entirety. If you have to pick it up to me now, you can take a look at it at the same time.
Yeah.
I think there's an opportunity here that needs to be discussed. It's not gonna happen quickly. I know that. I don't wanna be a Berlin water czar or a sewer czar at all. So it's not, it's not an issue for me at all. I've already had a career. This is just helping at the existing camp. So it's not for me. And basically, I would be getting myself out of a job because I'm not gonna be doing this forty hours, for sure. But, but the point of it is, I think it needs to be done. I think it needs to be looked at very carefully. And look at it, and you need to, two perspectives on it. You need to look at it from the engineering, infrastructure perspective and also from the financial perspective. And then legal, of course, that's the other, very important, I guess.
Yeah, so, yeah.
See, I've been told over the years, I've questioned it for many years, Rick, and I've talked about it many times, is to either have the customer base, which are basically shareholders, voted out of existence, or the state legislature resolve it. And if we really wanna move forward, we have to inform the customers. Most people have no idea how the system works here. I know many people that are paying the property tax, they manage it. They aren't even liable for it. They don't have water sewer service and they get a bill for it. And they pay it because they think it comes from the town. I know one business paid about fifty thousand dollars in the last ten years. And they're hooked up to the Berlin system.
Correct. And that's another question because along the Berlin turnpike, we think it's our water supply and Worthington thinks it's their water, water supply. And they can't come up with any records showing that it's theirs. So that, that's the other question. I mean, is water going through the main?
Water wars.
That's why, that's why I have headaches every once in a while thinking about these things because they're too complex. Nothing straightforward.
Somehow we have to get our, the public interest.
Yeah, we have, we're obviously gonna educate ourselves first, hopefully, and then the public, so we can then make some intelligent decisions on what to do, which is.
Consolidation into one would be ideal. And, you know, cost savings and it's a better service for the town too.
And they're not gonna take my word for it.
No, I, well.
They're gonna need somebody else to come up with that proposal.
There are liabilities.
Oh, I agree. And that was a perfect example, a perfect example of the USDA. That was a blind sight because I, I never knew that. I thought that they were doing it on their own.
But these improvements are gonna have to be made, whether they maintain control or the town takes it. And the rate payers, the customers are gonna pay for them one way or the other. You know, there's no easy way around it. Well, we've gotta do the improvements and they don't seem willing to do it.
Well, the longer we wait, the worse it's gonna be. Because in the report from Camp Drescher McKee, it, one of the other things it did, it was very good report. Spelled out, not only the type of pipe, size of pipe, but also the age of pipe. We're talking about forty, fifty, sixty years old. And that's twenty-two years ago. So, you know, some of these pipes are gonna be, and particularly, and I gotta bring in a vitrified clay for you because once you see it, it's almost like a flower pot with an extension. That's all it is. And once it cracks, that's it. You're gonna have to repair it. You're not just gonna be able to reline it.
It doesn't have to be nice to see water flowing through that pipe. You don't have to know that our water's coming through that pipe.
Well, not your water, like.
No, no, thank goodness. But, you know, whoever's is, yeah. All right, well, so what do we think from here, folks? What do we need to do?
What we're doing is we're meeting, we are meeting, we've got a meeting arranged with the Kensington and Worthington Fire District in my office on October fifth.
Oh.
I think we have, we have a conversation with them.
I think, I think it's October fourth.
October fourth, fourth, fifth, in that, in that range. And we're going to, we're gonna be, we're going to talk about it. Just talk in general is about where we are at this point. I think at some point, we, I think the Water Control Commission, we should present to you a report on where they are. The other part, we have to look at, and I've looked at it before, in, in the town charter, any allocated areas go to the Berlin Water Control Commission as far. That's one of the reasons that Ray and I went to the State Water Commission and requested that any, any allocated property in the town of Berlin be given to the water, the Berlin Water Control Commission.
I don't understand that. I didn't understand that part. So what, what does that mean?
It's a declaration of service area. So if somebody, for instance, and this is a good example because it's an example that I used on the Chamberlain Highway. Somebody decided to put a Dunkin' Donuts and it was zoned for that.
Okay.
That would be considered a non-community system. We would take it over. We would operate it as such until we were able to serve with water or sewer service down the road. And that's exactly what we do. We basically identify a satellite operation. In theory, the reality would be is if you had a main, we would extend it for a few now. And ultimately, one of my goals is, is that we can have a connection with Middletown, two, actually, two connections with Middletown. One by Pistol Creek and one by Division Street, Main Street, and then two with Meriden. And Meriden would be one owned by Chamberlain. And all of these supplies, that would prevent, we're the only, we're the only obstacle between serving water from Granby to South Central back and forth. That's the only linkage that's not made.
Here?
In Berlin, yeah.
That's it?
Once it's linked to Meriden, then you can technically bring water out from Granby down to South Central or vice versa.
Wow.
The connections.
The ability to serve as an exclusive service area is not something that's in the town's control. It's in the state control. When we, when Ray and I went to the meeting, if you looked at the map of the area Ray's talking about, almost every town in every area was allocated to different, different providers, other than a great, a large portion of Berlin. And that's the cross, crosshatched area on the map. Ray and I are looking at them, we're saying, well, wait a minute, that should be, according to our charter, should be under our control. And the State Water Committee said, well, no, no one's ever allocated that. And the State Water Committee said, well, no, no one's ever allocated that. Uh, despite just sending a report, raised, sending reports to them, uh, over the years, and, and we never got it allocated. We felt it was important, because what could have occurred, and, and, and I don't forget if you was thinking about it, but what could have occurred is Middletown, Meriden, or someone else could have actually come in and said, we claim that area, the state would have given it to them, and it would have been out of our control. So, we, we made, we put in our, our request.
They could've, they could've done that?
Yeah.
Yep.
And so, we, what we've done is, we've claimed it is part of ours. We're going with this, I think, at, at some point, it's, I think it's imperative on the town, to look at their liability and responsibilities, and make sure that, you know, without going to an extreme, and we all know, with Flint, Michigan, we, you know, that's going to an extreme, I'm not worried about that, but there are some, some, some conditions that Ray and I talk about that are disconcerting, that, that I do worry about. And one of the things he mentioned is residual chlorine. If we're able to get these systems coordinated better, the, the residual chlorine in the water would be improved, we get, we'd get the proper circulation, uh, we wouldn't have any dead ends, and then our, our customers and their customers would have better quality of water. So, I think we have to look at this, uh, and, and start studying this and see what improvements can be made in the format that we're in.
Okay, so, maybe what we can do, at least to start, is, so you have your meeting on October fourth, and when our, I don't know when our next council meeting is, but...
Second.
The second, I understand what you mean, but, uh, but, you know, some, at some point, whether it's at a council meeting, I know it takes a lot of time, maybe we need to do a...
A workshop.
A home, be a little bit of a workshop, once you have, after that meeting...
Yep.
And, and just see what we need to do next. Certainly, uh, they, you know, you're, uh, leadership in that role, so I think all of us can get educated, uh, about what we may need to do. Um, does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
Great, all right, so that, that's what we'll do, we'll fix some, some type of workshop after that meeting, and we can all get together.
Thanks for the information.
Yeah, we appreciate it, thanks for all the hard work, uh, Jack and Ray, Jeff will be doing some hard work, and, and, we'll see. And Water, Water Control Commission, thank you guys, too, for being here, and, uh, hopefully we can start at least working to straighten this out, I hope. We're gonna try, we're gonna try. All right, good, thank you.
Agenda item number nine A, is focused for Ray, uh, again, the Belge World Interceptors, or Rehabilitation Project, which we are in the midst of, um, we are applying for loans and, and grants from the State, the State Connecticut Department of Environmental and Energy and Environmental Protection. We need to have a resolution passed by the Town Council, um, authorizing me to, uh, enter into the agreements. So, the resolution is attached to your, to your, uh, handout, so we need to have you pass that today, so we can submit the, uh, the application.
Kate caught that, and she was able to put it on the agenda, so Kate could have it done, so, so, but...
Okay, okay. Another motion, or, uh, what do we do?
We have a motion.
Motion, I guess, right?
Yes. We move, be it resolved that it's in the best interest of the town of Berlin, Connecticut, to enter into contracts with the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. In furtherance of this resolution, Jack Healy, the town manager, is duly authorized to enter into and sign contracts, and on behalf of the town of Berlin, the town manager is further authorized to provide such additional information and execute such documents as may be required by the state and federal government in connection with said contracts to execute any amendments, decisions, and revisions thereto. The town clerk is authorized to impress the seal of the town of Berlin on any such documents, amendment, revision, or revision.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you very much, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved, so resolved.
Okay. Agenda item number ten, um, is a request, uh, to authorize the town manager to apply for historic documents preservation grant. Kate found that there's a, a grant available for forty-five hundred dollars to be used on our land records, um, so she's requesting that we, that you authorize us to apply for that grant.
Okay, Kate, what do you think? Yeah?
We move to authorize Jack Healy, the town manager, to apply for historic documents preservation grant for the two thousand nineteen targeted grant, for a amount of four thousand five hundred dollars. On receipt, grants, funds are to be deposited to the special grant fund account.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you very much, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved. Anything, Kate, come on.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we are at appointments, we have one appointment this evening, at Central Connecticut Health District, unfortunately, there was, uh, vacancy, the recent death of Carolyn Waisaki. We recognize that our last meeting for her long and outstanding service to, to that health district and to, uh, you know, to, to the town, so, so we have one, uh, we have one applicant, so, there you go.
Okay.
Nomination.
Lisa Panessa for this position, let's see.
Second. Thank you. Uh, any further nominations? Hearing none, opposed nominations, and opposed in favor of Mrs. Panessa?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved. Want, oh, thank you, Charlie, yes, I was gonna, yeah, thank you. Okay, and on to our, uh, town manager.
Okay, the first thing, Tom, I believe is part of your package, there's a, a report, Yankee Institute report, um, I, just for information on your part, uh, I know sometimes we always paint bleak pictures about finance, our financial status, and where we sit in the state. I think it'll be interesting to read that, and see if there's like a cutoff of, of seventy where you consider it to be a healthy town, and below seventy, not a healthy town, and above seventy, it's supposed to be a healthy town. Uh, it's interesting reading, Berlin is at seventy, and, uh, it's interesting to read some of the towns that are below you, or below us, and, and, and so I just, I give it to you for informational purposes, it's not doom and gloom. Uh, so I did find it really interesting reading, and I thought it'd just be good for everybody to, to have a copy of that, and to, uh, and to, for your, yeah, Mike, Mike?
I'll go, yeah.
Um, you go just a minute. Uh, before he leaves, I want to introduce you to our new Public Works Director, Michael O'Hearn, um, he spent here two days, and, and, and I invited him to come tonight, um, Michael's, he, he was with, he was the Deputy Director over at Wilton, who lives in Danbury, um, he willingly took his job.
Nice drive.
Yeah, it was a solid hour, yeah. He's already, he's got the, jumped right in, and, um, and, and already familiar with, uh, with, you know, with our operations, and I think his first day was to go down and make sure we had plenty of salt in this one.
I did.
Looks good. The second thing I want to tell you, and, and Mike's, we're gonna, we're gonna have to report a lot, um, we received notice, uh, this afternoon, that we were approved and endorsed by the PROB to receive a two thousand eighteen Loser Grant for two point nine million dollars for the, for our roads. Uh, the roads that we applied for were Burnham Street, Porter's Pass, Estory Drive, Christian Lane, and Demme Road. And those we out, we outsourced, we have those all reconstructed, so we did receive that, uh, that grant and the notifications, and that's a, that's a, that's a, a nice, a nice win for the town of Berlin, um, that's gonna take care of a lot, part of our roads. I told Mike, I said, gee, you're here two days, you got a two point nine million dollar grant, what are you gonna do tomorrow? So, uh...
The hero already, look at that, two days.
It was the advance work that helped on that.
But, uh, a lot of thanks to everybody, and thank you for allowing us the grant to apply for that grant. So, uh, that will take care of a, you know, a big chunk of our roads, and you, we'll be able to do that without having our town crews do that, but personally, great, many times, you know, we do a lot of previous prep work, in this case, we are gonna outsource the project and just have a contractor come in and do it soup to nuts, and just so that our crew that we're doing other things, maintaining our, our roadsides and catch spaces and things, allow somebody else to do this project, the entire project for us, so, thank you. Um, I don't know if Jeff wants to jump in, the third one, we have quite an extensive conversation about, uh, our, our blighted, our blighted property at Seventy Seven Elton Road.
So, so Mike, so thank you, very, for being here, and thank you for flying to Berlin, and welcome.
Good to be here.
We're happy you're here, and, uh, appreciate it.
He's finding that I visit him about once an hour, and I'm taking a file and putting it on his desk.
Might not be the best thing, knowing that former Public Works Director now is...
Yeah, he's, uh, he's mail, he's, he's lighting his load, and it's coming onto my desk, and that's fine.
You're welcome, glad to have you.
Um, as a follow-up to last meeting, um, Seventy Seven Elton Road, you know, as you know, we had, we had issued a, a penalty against the, the property owner, um, we'd actually gone further and have filed a complaint in a brick court against the, against the owner. In there, we're, we're requesting, uh, a temporary and permanent injunction, which will allow us to perform maintenance on the property. Um, and, and, and I like the way that Jennifer, our attorney, Jennifer Polo, worded this that, it's up to the town to make the discretion of what, what, what maintenance we're going to do, but the idea is that we make the property such that the, the adjoining property owners will start to enjoy their lawns and their backyards more, so, um, I, I know Jeff was involved, was involved with, with putting this together, but we, we filed that, and we have a court appearance, I believe, on October twenty seventh.
Correct.
Show cause, Eric.
Do you have the, just to have, we were, and, just, show, for...
So, I just wanted to bring you up to date that we had pursued that after the last meeting.
I appreciate that, it's, a couple of the adjoining property owners happen to come up to me at the fair, and, uh, they're very appreciative of, um, you know, that, they know the town, Jack, all, you know, the council has paid attention to them, and, uh, and they know it's a difficult process to get through, but they, uh, they, they know it's moving forward, and, uh, you know, they, they did express that concern about, um, you know, their backyards, and, uh, you know, with views that they have grandkids and things like that, so hopefully we can get to that point to clean it up a little for them, and they can enjoy their property. Thank you for that.
Another thing we've been doing, we've, we've got some, um, calls about signs, signs on lawns, signs on roadsides, signs being posted on certain areas. Um, are planning a zoning, uh, land, land use department has put together, um, guidance on signage, and where they can be placed, where they can't be placed, and we're going to put that, that, that guidance on the town website and on the town's Facebook page, so that will be out, that will be being posted within the next couple of days.
You're talking about, oh, oh, political signs?
Any, any of the signs. Yeah, we're getting, we're getting a lot of calls on those, and so we felt that instead of feeling all those calls, we take a proactive approach, we put out some guidance to people on our Facebook page and on our webpage.
Yep.
Um, number five, and, and, uh, this is a follow-up, too, and I think all of you are aware, but there is a community center meeting, or community center, senior center grant meeting, uh, open forum on seven o'clock on Thursday at Berlin High School, uh, we have advertised as an open forum. I had the opportunity today to go and speak, um, at the art meeting up at, up at the, up at the senior center, and I kind of told them that not only could I speak, I don't, I think I qualify not a joint, but, um, anyway, we had a great conversation, um, and a lot of give and take, a lot of them expressed opinions on it, uh, I think many of them are planning to attend the, the open forum on, on, on Thursday, but the, and the intent is to have, and I explained to them, it's an open forum, uh, the town's not going to present anything, we're gonna hold in the meeting, we're gonna request their comments. We've also, uh, told them if they have, if they can't make it, they can email comments to, to Kate Wall, um, or if they want to, they can mail comments to the town manager's office. And I know that Joe Marasimov just sent out an email blast this afternoon, uh, and included all that information.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the plan would be to have them, just let the people speak, you know, we'll just say a couple of words in the beginning, that's it, and, and they can say whatever they want to say, and, uh, we'll have a follow-up meeting, uh, maybe sometime in October to answer their questions or comments, you know, so we'll have a little bit of time to look at what they tell us or what questions they ask, uh, but literally, we just want them to, help to speak.
I told them to have a follow-up meeting in October, and they all, they expressed a great interest in that, too.
Good, great.
Um, next item is the T O D work, uh, I think, as you know, you approved a, a, a person, a company to do that work for us, to start developing a plan, they have met, um, with, um, with the Plan of Zoning Commission, or, not Commission, the Plan, uh, our town planner, myself, Chris Edge, and they have started to develop a conceptual idea for what they would do in an environmentally property. Uh, we've, we've given them our input, we gave them the input that we got, uh, when the committee was reviewing their proposals, uh, and they're starting to put together their thoughts, they're looking at the environmental reports, um, and they're looking at the, the, some of the traffic studies that are out there, and, uh, really, they're approaching this in what they blank sheet of paper, they, you know, they've gone so far as to ask such simple questions, would, would the town object to moving the boulevard, you know, the proposed boulevard one way or the other, uh, changing the, the geometry of it? So, they're, they're taking a fresh look at this, and to see how this would best work out, um, so they're gonna come together, they're starting to work on that, and they're working very closely with, with, with Mark Kazakovsky on that. Um, the next thing, uh, a couple, the next three or four things, what I'd like to do is if, if, if the council would entertain it, the Park and Rec Commission is requesting a playing field committee meeting, and I'm requesting an ordinance committee meeting for the tax abatement, working without a permit, uh, ordinance, procurement process ordinance. I was wondering if, if I could have Christie, uh, contact each committee and set those meetings up, um, over the next, what I would suggest is maybe the second week in October, if we look at that, uh, 'cause we have the, you know, we have, right now, we have the, the, the community center meeting, and we have preparation for the next council meeting, and the other things, so, I was thinking about the second week in October, see if we can set up a, a noise committee meeting and a playing field, um, playing field committee meeting, if that's, if that's good for the council.
Yeah, yes, right, they're good.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Okay. Absolutely, we're gonna get those ordinances done.
The last thing is, I was calling a Board of Ethics meeting together, we have, we've been, we had met, and they had requested information from each of the unions, we had not gotten a lot of feedback from the unions on what we sent out, but we'd also had an M P P filed by the police union, um...
We canceled it, we...
Lots of good, I had to lose, we, I, I, I was, there, there is constructive reasons to go to the Berlin Fair, I met with John Flynn at the Berlin Fair, over some fried tackles, and, uh, we were able to come to, we're going to, we were able to cancel the M P P, and what we were agreed upon is we're going to work together on this, and the goal is to have this done before the season here.
Oh, great, thank you, 'cause I know he, and remember, we all heard that, remember about the ethics committee there, so we just have to resolve that, but it's great that, you know, I spoke to John, too, I'm glad you were able to speak to him that way.
We found the fair had picked a booth, so we're good.
Yeah, well, that's good, that's, so, that's, that's business guy conducted at the Berlin Fair, and we had some food, too, all good.
So, anyway, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, so, special committee reports, we're, we're, we don't, right, we don't have any, right? No, so we're gonna plan those meetings coming up. Council Communications. Council Communications.
Um, I just wanted to mention the, um, the community conversation, the opioid community conversation that was held, um, that was put together, uh, spearheaded, and then organized by, um, it was the Central Connecticut, yeah, Health District, um, yeah, it was, um, an informative evening, and a liking evening, and a really difficult evening, I mean, there was some, there were stakeholders there, family members of, of addicts, and, um, at the very end, I talked to two moms, um, who reside in Berlin, one of whom actually no longer lives here because it's too difficult for her, but, you know, both lost their daughters over the last year, um, so, it was, um, it was, uh, a tough night, but, once again, very informative, and we're hoping for the committee here, um, so that we can try to make Berlin a recovery-friendly.
Absolutely, yeah, that's good, yeah, in fact, there's, right, there's, uh, Charlie from the Health District talked about that grant, uh, so, I told them, just send us whatever grant, so I told him, just send us whatever, so we can endorse it, and that moves down that road, so. You're right, there was a couple very sad, I mean, many sad stories of unfortunate parents who were there, about their children, which passed on, so. But, moving forward from that, to try and hopefully keep it from happening again, or slow the issues that we have with the opioid crisis, which is very difficult to do, right?
Yeah.
Well, we'll try. So, anyone? Peter? Here?
I think I was a bit dismayed to think about this public forum for the senior center slash community center through Facebook, and it'd be very nice to have that on the panel or something.
I thought I'd known that email before. I'm sorry, I thought.
Never going to do that. So, you know, I, I hope that the next one in October is the dates, when you hope the date it would be provided to us in time.
Yes, yes. I thought it did, but, so, I, it didn't. I'm sorry for that. It should have, it should have, yes, we will remedy that next time. Absolutely. Brendan?
Thank you.
Charlie, welcome again.
Thank you, everybody.
You want to give up? You want to just stop and forget it?
Stay in that time, I think. I want to thank everybody for the support, and also, I don't know how the committees work now, if you want to sign me in any committees.
Yeah, oh, yes, we'll have to, yeah, we'll figure that out.